Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for the Town of Douglas, Thursday, June 24th, 2021. Time is now 7:12. First item on the agenda, public hearing continued. Pine Sand and Stone Company, applications for an earth removal special permit, water resource protection overlay district special permit, requested a continuance to 7:22:21. This has been continued multiple times. I think that we should have them absolutely come in the next meeting.
Give an update.
And give us an update, even if there's incomplete information, because it's too many hearings that are, no one's here, butters are looking for information. So I'll entertain a motion.
Entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to July 22nd. Do we have a time?
Seven.
7:00 PM for the Pine Sand and Stone Company, application for earth removals, special permit, and water resource protection overlay.
Motion made.
Second.
All is a favor?
Aye.
Okay. Please let them know. Next item, we have two minutes. Want to take anything quick?
I will. We can accomplish in two minutes.
Bob is here. Hello. Good evening. Did you want to come up and give us a status?
Yeah, do you want me to come up there or say here?
You can just stand there, that's fine. Thank you. Name and address.
Hi. My name is Bob Pace, and I'm the developer of White Heights. I, last week, I sent over a memo to Kent, updating him what has transpired there and where we were going. If you have it, okay, we can go over it, and I can add to it.
We don't have the copy of your email?
Let me read it to you.
Yeah, that would be perfect, thank you.
I'll have a very good reader.
That's okay. Take your time.
Okay, so, catch basins were cleaned and jetted, okay, right after the first, the first meeting. First of all, let me back up for just a minute. Confession is good for the soul, but not the reputation. I fell asleep the meeting I was supposed to be here.
Okay.
I woke up and I kind of panicked, and I wrote an email at 10 o'clock at night, and I sent it. I meant the board no disrespect, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So the catch basins were cleaned and jetted, including the ones on Douglas Hill Way. Okay, down, whatever it is, down, down, down.
Down the west bank.
Right. Okay, the four bay basin was cleaned out and pressure washed. The lots four, six, and seven have been prepped foundations, okay, to protect, to prevent against erosion control. In other words, we built up there, there's been no erosion control. There's been no erosion issues there. Streets are swept as needed, okay. All the boulders that were up on lots 11 and 12 have been crushed and placed neatly on lot one now, so they're all, they're all stockpiled on that one lot. We're going to use that material, okay, for base material, for driveways and underneath All the loam was screened, okay, and is neatly piled on lot 11 and 12, so that's all screened at this point. All the site work had been completed for lots eight, nine, and 10, including landscaping, loaming, and hydro seeding. This should start to vegetate shortly. All the, well, back then, okay, what this says, all the drivers have been prepped, all the drivers have been hot-topped at this point as well. The site work for lot five actually began, okay, began on Monday. We're going to bring fill in for the septic system. It's actually at grade, we're going to build around the septic system to bring the grade up. We've had a problem getting some fill in here. That's, that's an ongoing mission, but they're placing the septic tank in there tomorrow. They were supposed to come today, but whatever, they didn't come. We've submitted the permit for lot four, which I whined about enough, and you people acquiesced to, okay, so I can build that lot five septic system and pour lot, pour lot four while I'm building the septic system in lot five. The permits for lots six and seven, okay, as soon as they're issued, we're going to start working on the site work, pour foundations, fill that in, put a loam and seed it the same way we talked about, okay, when, when we, when we came in with a plan. In, in summary, we hope the planning board sees a marked improvement on the erosion control efforts, and hopefully, please be mindful, it's our intention to finish all the foundations in the road this year.
Are we doing weekly inspections with the engineer? Or are we getting status reports for the?
So, does everybody, everybody knows that Jude is the engineer. Everybody knows that he got really hurt.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's been very difficult. Yeah, he had a skiing accident, I don't know if you ever?
Yeah, we remember, yeah.
Okay. And I've called him three times this week, because I knew I was coming here. I said, do you have a report? And I've left him messages and so on and so forth. I called Aunt Andrews, okay, and he's been out for a couple of days. So the answer is, okay, they are doing it, we hired them to do it every two weeks. To the best of my knowledge, we're probably a week down now, but I can show you texts and phone calls and so on, too.
When was the last status report that we received? That was submitted to the town? Because I know Jude was out there on his crutches.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know something, I don't know if he had a relapse or what, and I really don't, because he at least calls me back. He didn't call me back.
Okay. So when was the last date that we received a report?
I would say it's probably a couple of weeks ago, maybe two and a half weeks ago.
I don't remember seeing anything after Jude talked to us, like, months ago.
He was on, he was on the screen.
Yeah.
To give us some verbal report.
Verbal, yeah.
If he sent anything.
No.
I'm, I'm not making excuses, I just don't know how hard to press somebody in that condition, and I'm not asking for you to.
But there's other, you know.
There's Byron, there's other people in that office.
Yeah.
It's just him, you can't hold up a project because one guy is.
And I called, and I called Byron yesterday and today, and didn't get a phone call back, so I don't know if they're just inundated or whatever. Okay, the guy in the front.
They've been acquired by another company.
Right.
So they're not in Oxbridge.
Yep.
So.
I, I can assure you, by this time next week, you'll have, not even this time, I mean, I'm on them like a.
Okay, so if we can't get one, then we need to hire someone to be monitoring the work that's going on.
And, just so you know, I mean, okay, Ken comes out there and does inspections, not necessarily, okay, the erosion, we, we do an erosion walkthrough any time there's anything but sun, okay, make sure there's no issue. I've done it myself.
Yeah.
I don't want this.
But for our records and a paper trail, and, I mean, board, do you guys feel the same way? I mean, that's what the permit, I think, requires.
I took a ride through about a week ago, and I've got to say that I'm impressed with the way the site is being maintained, the work that's being done. You know, all the curving wasn't in the last time I went through. Is that, is the rest of the curving been installed?
No, absolutely not. And, and, you know, we want to get the foundations in before we bang it up, okay? We're replacing all that curving. All the granite is in.
I want to make sure it's safe for people that are living there, sidewalks and, and I like the way it looked, it was, the progress you're making, and the stability of the property is much better than it was in the past, so that was good.
Did you have the orange fencing, orange type of fencing around the, since you're putting foundations in, and you've got children in the area?
Yep.
Are you putting any safeguards around those foundations?
They're only open for a day, but I do, okay, do we put safeguard in? We typically just break the slopes down, okay, and a lot of these are walkouts, so it's, it's not a.
Yeah, only one side to walk out, or maybe two sides is a walkout, but you still have, you know, from the front yard.
Anything deeper than 44 inches, you're supposed to put a protection up.
The answer is, we haven't been doing that, okay? It's, it's, you know, okay, we do break down the.
Take the forms off.
I'm sorry, I can barely.
You take the forms off and backfill, and then that's where you have a problem.
He still has to come in with a two-minute damp roofing or something, they got to do that.
We got to put the drains in.
And the drains.
We got to put the drains, we got to put the.
So it's open for more than a day, probably.
Okay, so we need to do that according to code.
Yeah, that's code, you got to do that. No open trenches, no.
So what do you want, like some snow fence there?
Well, no, I mean, whoever's in charge of the project, there are no OSHA regs.
Yeah.
And common practice, I mean, we're not going to tell you what you need to do, you need to follow the law.
Yep.
It's an open pit, you can't have it, you just can't. It's a law.
One other thing, we're just trying to be helpful, anyway, is that you said you're going to put the stone under the foundations, it has to be under disturbed soil under those foundations, puddings.
No, we understand that, okay.
It could go under slats, and you could mechanically.
This has already been tested.
Yeah, but the foundation, I just hear that, and I know otherwise, I'm just trying to help it.
Okay. Mike G., do you have anything? Any questions? Mike C.? Okay, so we need a report by the end of the week, next week, or else we'll just hire a consultant to do it on behalf of the town, to protect our interest. Okay? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Can I ask a question? I've got a cash bond. Okay, we're not looking for a bond reduction, but I want to substitute, I've got an insurance bond here, I guess I've been working with the town.
We need to do the paperwork. Yeah, it's, it's a paperwork, it's a document, to switch out the bond type.
Right.
Do you have that paperwork?
Do I leave it here?
No, not right now.
That was a quick note.
Yeah, no, we have to prepare a form for you, and then we vote on the exchange.
Okay, so should I?
Should we have it reviewed by council?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's all reviewed.
I think we have, we have, we've done it before, I forget which, what was the last project, earth removal, I think, for Pines Pit. Yeah, no, not yet. You wouldn't leave the bond with us yet. So we need to prepare a document.
So I should make a copy of this bond, send it to whom? I guess that's my question.
We need to just make the, we have a form, the surety form, for the planning board, and then I think you would just submit it with that.
Can I do this myself, or does Jen have to do it?
Our town council will review it.
Town council.
It's just an exchange in the bond type.
Right, so again, just so I'm clear, okay, I got to give it to someone.
Why don't you, yeah, if you can scan it and email it to Ian, and then we'll get it to town council.
Do you have my email address?
I don't, sir.
Oh, cards.
Ooh, that was.
Something came up earlier in the meeting, and I was like, I've got to be clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Bob, you can fill out the form as well.
So is that the G form, or whatever it is?
Probably, yeah, yeah, the security form.
Surety form.
Yeah, surety, but I think it said security.
Okay, let her do it, okay, I think it'll be, it'll go a lot quicker.
All right, sounds good. We'll see you back at our next meeting.
When is it?
It is June 22nd.
July 22nd.
July 22nd. This is June 24th.
So can I ask a question? These are all non-Zoom meetings now, right?
No.
No, they are.
We're hybrid, so attendees and experts can Zoom in, all the board members need to be present.
Can I?
Yep.
Do a Zoom meeting here, since it's a hundred miles away I come?
Yes.
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 I appreciate.
Don't fall asleep.
Okay, my wife asked you.
See, that's why you didn't fall asleep, because you had to drive here, and it's still light out.
They're all for ice cream.
Yeah. Thank you very much, yeah, we'll have the Zoom available the next time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
For coming in.
Okay, moving along, 7:26, we have a public hearing, Keith and Marilyn Westburg, application for an accessory apartment special permit, 75 Pond Street. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, the Town of Douglas Accessory Apartment zoning bylaw, section 3.3 and 9.3, the Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application of Keith and Marilyn Westburg for an accessory apartment special permit. The property is located at 75 Pond Street, Assessor's Map 117, parcel 12, Douglas, Mass. The public hearing is being held on Thursday, June 24th, 2021, at 7:15 PM in the Resource Room, Municipal Center, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. A copy of the plan may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest Marks, Chairman, Douglas Planning Board. And we have someone presenting the application?
Yeah.
Okay?
I'm James Ford, I live there.
Okay.
So, we're in the process of getting the mortgage to make it final for us, and this was done before we got there, so in order for us to go on the mortgage and stuff, this has to be completed, just want to make everything right. We've been here for two years already.
Okay, you've been living there for two years?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was already done before we got there, so I just, we need to know that he didn't think we were supposed to do it.
You're just getting it permitted?
So we're just trying to make everything correct.
Okay.
What is this drawing?
So I did the drawing up, of the layout for it.
I think it's a Bitcoin scan or something, I don't understand it.
Was, was the previous in-law accessory apartment, is that previously approved by this board?
It was not, that I know of.
Are you asking for any waivers? It's checked, yes.
I wasn't sure, like, I filled out the best I could.
You just said yes for everything?
I wasn't sure, I'm sorry, it was my first time, like, so.
Do you have two meters?
No, we have one, it's, it's just my mother-in-law that's down there, so it's not for an income or, it's just, well, but the bylaw requires to. Okay.
What? No, does not allow to. Right.
It has to be the same meter.
Ian, you took a look at this?
Yes.
Very straightforward.
It's a very straightforward, because it's already there. Not much that we can sort of make conditions on the installation, but we should be.
But what's overall square footage?
641.
641?
Yeah. So we allow 941.
Sorry, board, you know, I.
I know.
You know, this, this is a, like, an engineer Bitcoin, like, graphic thing that doesn't, it doesn't, I don't, can't understand any of it, but I understand you probably tried to do it, but I can't comprehend this at all, so I'm sorry.
I think we're looking at the, the conditions of our bylaw for accessory apartments, and I think it meets all the conditions. And the building inspector is going to be looking at that.
How do we, it's not our jurisdiction whatsoever to see what is there, how it's laid out, or what the square foot.
Unless it was like 2,000 square feet or something.
How do we know it's 641? How do you know it?
Because we're authorizing 641 square feet.
We can't prove it until the building inspector proves it, right?
Do you need to get a permit for anything?
So, do I?
Yeah.
So I'm assuming that.
Are you going to pull a building permit for after the fact?
Yeah, I will do whatever you need me to do, make it correct.
But it's already existing.
Yeah.
But it's not permitted, so it's illegal. He's trying to permit it.
Yeah, there's three. I don't believe in our bylaw, it says that we need to be concerned with the inside with building code.
It's just square footage.
It's meeting the application requirements of the 900.
And the single meter.
Single meter.
And public water sewer.
And.
Town Water Council.
I thought there had to be access from one to the other.
Right, but you.
You can have it detached.
Yeah.
So that one, that, that one doesn't make sense.
And then the building inspector takes it from there?
Yeah.
Taxes will pay?
Yes.
All right. Taxes will pay?
Oh, yeah, I even had to go, and, yep, and the water bill, like, for the mortgage, I even had to, like, I already prepaid the water bill halfway through, even though we've been doing the whole nine yards since we've been there two years. So, like, you know, it's in his name, once this is all done, then your mortgage company is just waiting for this, and then we can close it officially. Like I said, I apologize, I'm just trying to make all this.
Who's the apartment being set up for?
It's my mother, my mother-in-law, and then my wife, which is Nicole, which is, that's her brother.
So we would be granting it to you, but you're not?
So, well, so the, once this is done, we can close the mortgage, and then it'd be technically in our names. So that's why I know this is a little confusing.
It's kind of the middle.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You need to check it all again.
Yeah, it's going to be on the property, so I would do it as the owner name.
Yep, fair enough. Because usually we, yeah, usually you get a lot of them, so, but these will be registered. And then I think it's every three years that it has to be renewed.
And then once she's gone, that's it, you know, so, I read that, so, no problem.
This is a public hearing, anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? No? Okay.
Our neighbors are trying.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion's made.
For the accessory apartment?
Ernie, all those in favor?
Aye. Abstain.
Okay. One abstention? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 75 Pond Street, Keith and Marilyn Westburg, application for accessory apartment.
Motion's made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye. Abstain.
One abstention. Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll sign that tonight.
No, for the minutes, and it was there, I abstain.
Okay, yeah, Aaron abstain.
Yep.
Nothing with you, you're outside.
Next three hours.
But we don't sign it until the building inspector approves it? So we do?
No.
No.
I believe he'll see that an accessory apartment was granted, and he will do an inspection. Yes.
And he will confirm the square footage, and he'll send that back to us to confirm that it was.
No, we don't ever confirm square footage.
It is what it is, it'll just, unless it goes over.
We look at a sketch.
It's his mother in the basement.
Again, it's foreign to me.
Yeah.
We come in, every board I've been on, there's drawings, it shows what it is.
I'm not even sure if that's really needed, now that the legislation has changed as a great for in-laws.
If it doesn't matter, and we don't care, and we just rub a stamp.
For your family, to take care of your family.
No, no, that's not the issue, that is my right, but it meets, it has to meet the criteria, we don't know the criteria, because we don't have anything in front of us, that's all my concern.
Well, he's telling us it's 641, we grant it at 641, if it's 642, we can take a closet.
He says it's 641, how do we know that? That's all I'm saying. And this is public, I want the public to know, how do we know that? We're trying to protect the neighbors.
We're relying on the applicant to tell us the truth on the application.
The building inspector knows that the threshold's 900, and stuff like that.
Right, so if he walks in there. But he will go in and confirm that, and it'll be somewhere in writing, or is he going to go, huh, 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 like that?
He'll confirm.
Don't they usually submit a sketch?
Yes, they did submit a sketch.
Why do we not?
More or less, see, if it's 641 makes sense.
Every applicant puts in a sketch and something like that, somewhat very detailed.
But they didn't here, there's no sketch here.
There is a sketch.
This is not a sketch.
Up to your standards, it's a sketch up for the board standards.
If we have to have a sketch, I know what a sketch is.
I just don't know why you're not giving, it's a hard.
He should get it.
All right, corner order, all right, all right, all right, enough.
No, I think in all due respect.
No, no, I'm calling it, we're moving on.
You want to move on from this?
Please, yes. We'll get some clarification on what happens after we sign that for next meeting. Okay, I'm not, okay, I'm not seeing Mark Allen.
Oh, there he is, he's in our alley. I'm from Allen Engineering.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm chanting for Mark.
Okay. All right, I thought you looked different. Okay, Stone Slope Stabilization Armstrong Building and Development, William Estates, lots three R and four, possible votes.
Do I come over here? Whatever, whatever spot that you got.
I actually have some plans.
Yeah.
We used to have a. Passes around.
Easel is in the corner right there.
Do you want it?
I'll grab it, I usually bring one, but.
That's probably yours.
This is a little mini board, so.
Somebody left that there, I think.
Yeah, go that way.
So there's, there's a few there, I'm not sure there's enough, each and every one of you, but. Shout out to everyone.
There you go. We're on number two, under discussion, additional business. Well, thank you very much for finally giving us a plan.
You are welcome.
As requested. So I love the cross-section.
That really tells the entire story.
Yes, yes, and it can be for our record, so.
Is everybody clear on the history?
Yeah.
And I'm coming in from Mark, so I've sort of learned the history today.
He explained it to us.
Just who you are for the minutes.
My name is Michael Dryden, I'm a senior project manager with Allen Engineering.
Does this help us? I think we're, most of us are familiar with the site.
Yeah, we did email it around.
So the end result, just to sort of walk you through this, is as you know, riprap was installed, the original special permit plan had a retaining wall on it. Mr. Kundif had asked for a letter from our engineer stating that, that riprap was stable, we provided that letter, but with the current design being a walkout, essentially all the riprap goes away, except for one small section of it. So it's a much better plan than a retaining wall, it's better for the owner, it's better for the neighbor.
The neighbor, that's what I was concerned with.
So.
Riprap is considered square edge, is right?
No, it's typically angular stone, but, and we understand that, but we were requested to provide a letter from a professional engineer, which we did. And again, this, this portion remains, which is the lowest portion of the riprap.
And those are rounded?
They are, they're rounded stones, but it's very stable, I just went through the site myself, I don't see any loose stones, I didn't see any evidence at the bottom of the slope, that anything was, you know, tumbling down the slope, if you will. So, again, that's all that's going to remain, this all goes away.
My concern is usually when there's water flow and stuff like that, the, a round rock likes to move, can it move easier than any, you know, squared edge stone in place?
Crushed stone.
Yeah, crushed stone and stuff like that, so.
And is there a clear demarcation on this property line so that there'll be no encroachment for that neighbor?
The property line was surveyed, and we can actually stake that limit if needed, Pete?
Keith Armstrong, I'm the general contractor and one of the owners. Actually, there is iron rebar out there, so yes.
Okay, so you don't see anyone heading on that, the neighbor's side to do this work, to do the removal?
No, you mean us to do the work? No, no, we certainly don't need to.
And we don't want any erosion happening over there? Okay. Cause it's right on the line.
Yeah.
Yeah, essentially the toe of the slope is the property line, so as long as we work inward from that, we're fine.
Okay.
And this will cause no additional runoff or anything onto the neighbor?
No, it's a very, very small drainage area, and again, it's a better plan now, because instead of a slope that is aimed at the neighbor, it's a flat grass in the backyard, a lockout.
Yeah. Board, would we wanna consider this as a minor plan change and a vote?
Yes, this would be considered a, like a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Great deal.
Minor plan change to the approved permit?
I agree.
I'll entertain a motion.
Do we put any motion for, do we just accept this, or?
I think we should vote to accept.
What are you, a motion for, accepting the change in grading?
As a, as a minor plan change.
I'll make a motion for a friendly amendment for the, we're on, hold on, there was one second. For Williams Court Douglas, we're gonna be doing it for-
Lot seventy-six.
Seventy-six church, for the friendly amendment on the gray change with the, with the stone and going to a more level type backyard.
You could do a-
Lot, lot three.
And, no, and four, affecting four too, over there in the corner.
Okay, motion's made and seconded.
I wouldn't wanna be the minutes maker, but.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll figure it out.
For Williams Court Douglas LLC grading, comparison plan lot three R and lot four William Drive Douglas, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Okay, motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, no abstained. Okay, thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks.
You're very welcome.
Want me to put it back where it was? No, you can leave it there.
Some open space over there, do we need these?
Ian, you want any more?
Yes, I believe so.
You want any more of these?
This has to-
Send a couple copies, recycle the rest.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is there gonna be a MyLok change down and stuff or nothing?
No, no property lines.
Alright.
Okay. Yep.
But there will be an ad built, this on it, correct?
Stamp the ad.
The ad belts will all reflect all this, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you, goodnight.
For coming in.
Alright, next on additional business, seven forty-three, request for board approval on sale of project assets BWC Whitein Reservoir LLC, Chair of Blue Wave Solar Forty-five, Oakes Street.
I recuse myself through the chair.
Okay, for the record, Mike Swicker is recused. And come on over, yup, name and address, yes.
Hello, nice to see you.
Hey, how are ya? We're live.
Jackie Firsty, on behalf of BWC Whitein Reservoir LLC, here to just discuss the board approval for selling a hundred percent of the BWC Whitein Reservoir LLC project assets to AMP Energy. So, just wanted to talk to the board about the process here. We sent over some information, a letter that AMP sent, providing, basically that they will abide by all permit conditions and for the future, they will own the special permit because they will own a hundred percent interest in BWC Whitein Reservoir LLC. So, that is just extra promise that they'll follow those rules and all the permit conditions, but they are also obligated to be some under the recorded permit. So, yeah, just wanted to talk to the board, wanted to know if you wanted me to present some information about AMP, or if there's anything I could clarify further from what we sent over previously.
Through the chair, did Jay Talman review them and sign off?
So he has not, I don't know if, maybe he responded not fully, but I sent a couple of emails over the last few days. I haven't, I haven't seen anything back. I don't know if maybe it was, didn't copy everyone?
No.
I think that we're just waiting for Jay's thumbs up.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I think because we asked him to verify.
It's gotta be reviewed by town council.
Town council, and I think we just need his thumbs up. So if you wanna copy email, you know, Ian and that with Jay?
Yes, yeah.
And then I would just keep on Jay to get the thumbs up so we can be okay with it in July.
So, on Monday, he responded, you know this email?
He sent, like, asking about a recorded instrument.
Um, no, he said, "I do think that a resume or narrative of their experience and financial wherewithal should be sufficient to demonstrate their ability to manage the project, and perhaps the approval of the sale should be in writing, be recorded, be contingent upon actual ownership, a recorded instrument should be sufficient to mind the new owner."
Yeah, and so I sent a follow-up email there, listed out a process, basically stating that we would submit, we would submit a letter noticing the town that we were planning on selling it, which we did in February, then AMP, the future owner, sent a letter saying we would abide by all permit conditions as you requested. And then our thought process there was, once that is approved, the town would, you know, have something in writing saying, "Yes, you approve this, you consent to this." And then we would be able to provide proof of the sale, so obviously it hasn't occurred yet. This would be this consent of, or they would be comfortable purchasing it officially, but it's in process. And so, there will be proof of that sale going through, we can provide that. We can also, as I mentioned, provide proof of the assignment agreement, basically assigning a hundred percent of the membership interest of BWC Whitein Reservoir from Blue Wave Solar over to AMP. So that, that will be happening anyway for the sale, we can provide that to the town once this occurred, is that.
I think before that, you wanted a profile of the company.
Oh, and tab it. Yeah, I sent over some slides.
And I reported it to everyone.
Yeah, so I was, yeah, hoping maybe-
But basically a resume portfolio of their holdings and experience and the-
Yeah, so that's like, it's an overview, it shows they own projects across actually the world, but they own, they own eleven operating assets in Massachusetts, specifically twelve that are near term about to be finished construction. They also own far more than that throughout the country, and like I said.
So he's got all that, he's just waiting.
Yeah, yeah, I just sent that over.
So, I think we could do a vote pending town council's final approval, so we can't keep carrying on. We really can't hold them to control their, their purchase, their sale.
Yeah, right.
Unreasonably. So, town council said what they provided is sufficient.
If they meet the criteria, then the board's probably favored doing this.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we can, we can wait till town council gets back, but at least we can take care of that before July twenty-second.
Are you waiting for a proposal to move it forward?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a hearing, so we don't have to close it.
Right, right.
I know, I know abstain, but you should also say, if something should come up, that you could sign for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna have a month before next meeting, if something should come in in a couple weeks, have it where it meets the council, that go ahead, just sign off on it.
Okay, I don't even know if there's a form.
Mike, I'd like to make a motion though.
Probably be, I don't know if there's a form, but it would probably be something you'd have to sign the approval.
Right.
We could make, you know, the-
Maybe it's the letter from the board, whatever, signature or something along those lines.
So for approval of the sale of the project's assets?
Right, from Blue Wave to AMP. You know, as long as it meets all the, I'm making a motion. As long as it meets the criteria and the approval of our legal counsel. And also in the same that we would have our chairperson, once the legal counsel has accepted this, to sign for, on behalf of the board. But I, by making that motion that we're in favor of this transition, as long as everything matches.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Mike Swicker abstains. Okay, good luck.
Thanks very much. If any, any positive results, we've worked with AMP in the past, they own at least five projects that we've built in the past.
You guys have been over there, I've seen you guys over there, you guys have had a bunch of cars over there, they've been up there checking it all out.
Yeah, yeah, we're taking a look around, we're working on the national grid pole design.
Yeah, I live across the street.
I know, so we were just thinking.
Don't worry.
You're today, so, yeah, that's why I was here a few minutes later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, goodnight, thank you.
I'm back.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so Skanel's decision has been revised and is in here.
Excellent.
Right?
Yep, yes.
Okay. And we changed the couple things that we, we changed the hours.
To match the-
Yes.
I did not, I thought that was on Jay's side, or the council's side, so they drafted the decision. If not, I can get you something tomorrow.
What's that for?
We wanted the hours.
Yeah, we were talking earlier.
Make sure they're all in sync.
I don't, I don't even see it in here.
The decision. Decision, yeah, okay.
And if we can, while we're on that subject.
Is that something that has to be voted on in-
No.
During the meeting?
No, we already, we did a friendly amendment on that. The deci-
It's gonna swing by the town hall.
The decision's not in here, either.
What's all the signatures for, though?
Other stuff.
There's a bunch of accessory apartment extensions.
So that's not in there, that's crazy.
Well, you have time to update it then. Yeah.
No, no.
If that could be done early next week, so we could swing by the town hall sign.
That can be done tomorrow.
Alright, cause I'm, not gonna resume around on the fourth of July.
Yeah, so it'll, so I will update that tomorrow, have-
Are we fully allowed in the town hall?
Yes.
Yes, you're fully allowed.
Come in and sign.
Okay. And then I will have, since Maria's not in the office, well, I'll check to see if she, maybe she's coming in on Friday to handle a couple-
Saturday.
We have a plant of wood box.
She'll be here on Saturday.
She's here on Saturday.
Yeah, she's coming in.
We have a plant of wood mailbox.
Okay.
And usually if you put it in there, we'll come by and sign.
We'll make sure that that is in the box on Monday.
Okay.
Okay.
And then it is also, unnoticed, everyone that it is ready.
Just, yeah, give me a jingle.
Yeah.
Or one of you guys give me a call.
Worst thing is the computer and it's not ready.
While we're on the subject, I was talking earlier with Ian about how in our decisions, we don't have anything about the twenty-four hour concrete pours.
Yeah.
So that in the future, now, we've never had a facility that's required that, and I'm glad to see that we finally are.
Might be more to come.
Right, and hopefully more to come. But in our standardized format, we need to have verbiage in there that matches where when twenty-four hour concrete pours or other items of that same entity are required, the planning board is to be notified and the chief of police. But I'm saying both.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we need to be notified about what's going on, cause we're kind of seeing the project. And also, I think on that same aspect, whoever the inspector, if it's our building inspector or whoever it might be, obviously needs to know about it too. But, um, to get that verbiage, I don't know how specifically to write it up, I would think, take a look at Uxbridge, where they already had experiences having to do that.
Yeah, man.
That's how we learnt about doing this. I think it's pretty great to say that we need to add something where you're pouring concrete twenty-four seven, it's, it's nice to, nice to have.
It's also nice that-
It's all tingly inside.
Neighbor of town's already gone through this, so we can take some lessons learned from them.
Okay, ZBA, who would like, there's three.
There's three?
Hold on, let's try this.
And one more?
You want one, Mike?
Flying goose, yeah, special permit.
Oh, flying goose coming through.
Oh, really? He always hit it a lot.
And then-
I don't care.
Mike, if you can, we're working on the meeting minutes?
I'll take that one, Mike.
You work on the meeting minutes, and I'll start passing things around. Ian, you have anything?
Um, only to say that at the end of the month, my contract with the town is up, and for some reason in budget, fiscal year budget, it can't be renewed until the new fiscal year.
Correct.
So, I will be done after the end of this month.
Sayonara.
Have enjoyed working with you all, you've been very grateful to work with, and you've been a really good town to work with. But I will say that Matt is currently, they're in conversation with a potential interim replacement planner, that I don't know where that is.
You said interim, not interim.
Interim planner who has experience in municipalities in Massachusetts. So I don't know where those conversations are at, but we have introduced this company with the town and tried, and facilitated some conversation CMRBC has. So, there, there might be relief in the form of another interim planner until you can find a permanent replacement. And if that is the case, I will be on hand in early July, or whenever this person starts, if they do start, to make the transition, to make sure that everything sort of flows.
Awesome.
But that is the only thing that I have on my end. I don't know. I, I, yeah, that, that comes with the negotiation of the thing, and I, that'd be on my paycheck.
And I'd like to know, and I'm gonna put it on the record, here we are, planning board, we're meeting pretty much every week, and we have for the last month, pretty much.
Yes, months.
And our own chairs, selectmen chair, administrator, can't even come to our meeting for five minutes and let us know personally what's going on. I think personally it's a joke. We're dedicating all of our time and everything, and we're not even being informed what's going on as far as town engineer. Ian's been awesome. I understand his formalities, but I really think it's a joke the way it's being handled.
Second that.
Thank you.
Ian, has Matt talked to Trish about extending you into next year, fiscal year?
I don't know.
But you're coming back anyway, so there will be some hours.
Yeah.
Right?
Of our LPI.
For the new planner.
Yeah, and that can be used, LPI hours can be used to do that, or-
Huh?
We should have some on our road.
Hours as a courtesy. I don't know how that will shape out.
As a courtesy?
That, I take that back. I don't know how that will shape out, that is, that's up to Matt and Trish settles my boss.
And there again, why isn't Matt informing us what's going on? You know, really.
Is it gonna take a year to hire somebody?
Well, yeah, I know. You're gonna be missed, you're just getting to know our routine.
You guys are rescuing. You have a good routine. Much appreciated.
Yeah.
Coming back, and I wish we could get you full time.
I know.
Not gonna happen, but. I like wearing that too much. But thank you for all the work you've done for us. You know, continue to, if you need help on other things, learn CMRBC, and maybe you'll see me again on some other project that-
So I got the, one of the ZBA.
What do you got?
I got family convenience for their plan that they came to us for, to move in across the street. They were, the variance that they're requesting is, and they're gonna be coming to us for cycling review afterwards, but the first step of variance is needed to allow motor vehicle gasoline sales and above ground liquid petroleum, gasoline and diesel storage on site.
Sure.
So they're looking to go to ZBA to get that allowed at that site if- Yeah, so for their plan to go across the street.
So what did they state for their hardships to meet the threshold for a variance granting? Shape of the lot, topography, soil conditions, or otherwise? The lot is flat, it's gravel, it's a rectangle.
Go water. You get the flying goose, Ernie?
What's that?
You get the flying goose for him?
Well, we should probably wait till Jake's-
I haven't even looked at it yet. I mean, I'll be here at the whole next planning board meeting. Yes, it's-
If everybody keep the packet together?
I like, I like the idea of-
Flying goose, what is?
Them going through, what is it, a special permit?
No, it's a variance.
A variance, so.
I like the idea of them going for a variance, because it's just gonna pertain to this one particular location. And it's moving, I think it's improving everything by moving across the street further.
Away from the rip and everything.
I'd rather do it this way than change the bylaw, because I don't wanna see gas stations popping up all over our aquifer. So, I think this is the way to go, rather than changing the bylaw and having them, all of a sudden having petroleum storage above ground everywhere.
I don't think this is because of the aquifer, it's because our bylaw doesn't allow for the storage, right? It's not because of the aquifer. That's a different permit, that's a different permit.
We were, thought we were gonna look into the compliance to be equal with the state.
Yeah.
On that aspect, and try to get a-
The state allows it, the town doesn't.
Right, but we, at that meeting, we had discussed that we wanted to come into compliance in equal footing as the state regs, as a town reg.
Yeah.
That way there, where everybody's on the same footprint, same path.
I'm just not sure that's a good idea. I'd rather handle it case by case, rather than allowing it in town wide. But it's up to the board, that's just my opinion.
Well, it's prohibited use in this zone.
In the zone, yeah.
So a variance, you need to meet the criteria that, of a variance, to grant a variance.
Why is it prohibited in that zone? What's the zone?
It's prohibited in the whole entire town.
Whole town, that's why we were talking about.
Spot zoning type of thing, where you would allow it only in one location.
Correct.
And you're not-
We can allow anything if we do, move into a variance or a special permit, it can be allowed.
But this is not a special permit, this is a variance?
A variance, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we can do with it.
It's the criteria to be-
Maybe coming to us for a special permit for the drive-through, saying, but they said they're-
I just, that's why I figured out how we should handle these types of things.
Saying the hardship would, they just won't be able to expand their business and lose revenue.
Yeah, that's one of the hardships. Yeah.
So that's a substantial-
That's like someone saying, I wanna do an addition.
That's all that they listed here.
This way, cause I can't afford it that way, you know, it's, that's a money thing, it's not a variance. it's not a variance. No, I want this to happen, but it's, we need to do it right, you know, so.
Okay, board, where are we going to put down? Do we have an objection or no objection?
No objection.
If we can make it legally happen.
I have no objection.
I have no objection, I think at the ZBA hearing, be, just with the town, have, you know, have that open forum, have the town decide what they want, but from our aspect, I would have no objection, just see what the town has to say at the ZBA hearing.
The one I have is 17 Reed, Reed Road, we have a non-conforming RA lot there, required, it's a 10,000 square foot lot is what we have. So they're looking to build a single-family house. Believe it or not, they're pretty much going to be keeping all the correct setbacks, pretty much. Front yard setback required is 50 feet, they're going to be 50 and a half. Side yard required is 25 on both sides, they're going to be 25.5. Rear yard is 25, they're going to be 25 and a half. Structure height max is 35, they're going to be 28 to 30 feet.
What about the acreage?
It's 10,000, it's a small lot, is what I'm getting at, so it's not 90,000, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Was it cut off from something else?
No.
When was it?
It's a lot that's been there.
Forever and ever.
It's reconstruction of the existing structure.
Yeah, they're doing a tear-down rebuild.
As a special permit.
So what it is is.
I thought it was just a.
They're looking just for the approval, you know.
I'm in favor of that.
On their single-family, they want to put a home on it, a single-family house, they're going to stay within, believe it or not, all the setbacks.
In lot coverage, I'm sure they'll be fine.
But the frontage and the square 40s of the lot is just small.
That's fine.
There's an existing structure on there, right?
I don't know if there, I don't see anything about, I'm going to assume.
Oh, I thought you said.
I thought you said it was.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm saying the lot.
That should be a big thing, whether there's a house there or not, it's a big thing.
Why?
Why?
Because one's a variance and one's a special permit.
It is a special permit.
I know, but.
Can we just see if there's a house there?
Hold on. Yes, when the house at 17 Reed Road came up for sale.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought, because it was number 17, I thought that that was, okay.
Yep, so that's what they're doing.
Okay.
There's pictures of the house, pictures of the lot.
Good, perfect, perfect.
Consensus, okay.
Yes, no objection.
You can fill that out as no objection?
Yeah.
This one is a flying goose.
Is that a brewery? What is that? What is it? It's like, might be brewery. What's a flying goose?
Not a brewery, no, you know what it is.
I do?
It's a flying, yeah, so I want to go on, it's the one going up on the end of Route 16 by Webster. You know it, dude.
I didn't know the name of what.
It's called Flying Goose, I'll read it to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Flying Goose LLC is requesting a special permit in an industrial zone district pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Department, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning by law, Section 9.3, Appendix A, Section C.1. Retail establishment for sale of merchandise in an industrial zone district for a retail marijuana facility on property located at 286 Webster Street, assesses map 205 possible for.
Did they go with a higher street number?
They already entered it too with the selectmen and all that.
I didn't know.
The sale isn't, the sale isn't allowed in an industrial area, so they're looking for that.
Yeah, that should be fine.
And that's.
Special permit.
Special permit.
Okay.
It's not coming up here.
I have no problem with that.
No consensus is no.
I'm surprised they didn't go with like 1,000 something Webster Street, there's a lot of land in between the last house and that.
Yeah, like 1,000 Washington Street.
It's in London, New Hampshire.
Or wherever, Boston.
A little stretch at least.
Mike, do you have meeting minutes?
Well.
Anybody else take a look at them?
There was a lot, she, it's a new note taker, you can sell it.
The fifth one, there's item number 11, additional business, there's five sets of minutes mentioned, and the last one, they're 513, it's not in the packet tonight, it's supposed to be, I guess it's listed here, but 513 is not there. So there are four of the five are there, but I've never seen them before, so I'm not going to make any assumptions on them.
Okay.
Somebody, you know, has an opinion.
We can probably start correcting a couple of them. The representative from CM, I'm looking at April 8th, the representative from blank engineering, I believe that would be you, or.
Yeah.
Or was there another engineering firm that was here for that? That was 295 Main Street.
Which one are you looking at?
Uh, April 8th.
What was the other?
295 Main Street, the old, like a store there?
Nope, that was the owner.
The owner, the owner, representative.
You just give a name.
So, yeah, Joel presented it.
Yes.
So a representative, I would probably just change it to the applicant owner was present and gave an overview of the site plan.
Oh, good.
So with that change, and then in that one too, halfway in that paragraph, it says Mr. Marx opened the hearing to the public, that should just seem like it should be at the beginning of the minutes there.
They got the refund for that application?
Yeah, so that should be like the first thing.
That's good.
And then.
It should just be no.
She has Ian, question mark, question mark, so how do we want to label Ian when he's?
Ian is with last name and then that he's the board's planning agent.
He should probably be in attendance too, Ian.
Yeah.
Maybe list, if he's here, have him listed in the attendance.
She sent this to you?
So we're probably going to have to.
There's a lot of changes.
Yeah, somebody's going to have to edit these before we look.
You sign them, send them off to the side.
So I think if Ian's here, he should be in listed as in attendance, with maybe like his parentheses of what his role is, since he's new.
Yeah, there is, right on the front page.
Yeah.
Interim.
It's a voucher.
Interim.
Yeah.
Sorry, missed that.
It's okay.
So we just got them tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we get them in a Word document and pass them out to the board?
We can get her emailed.
Like a couple people want to.
He's already signed them.
And I'm just seeing too, on April 22nd.
They're separated.
For white.
Those aren't signs, I'll take whatever.
June Gavin from Commodores Engineering.
Is that the new name?
Is that the new name or is, was he still part of Andrews at that point? So that should be Andrews.
Okay, who wants to review these and edit them? Because I don't believe the minute taker is working with us anymore.
Jeez, no way.
Do we have anybody? Can we find out if we have anybody?
No, not right now, we don't have.
The guy sitting next to me is doing a great job.
Yeah, we don't have anyone.
I don't know all these people. I'd have to look back at these meetings, like Lori something from Oak Street, Jackie from.
Do you want to pass them as you go?
Lori lives across the street.
Yeah.
No, what is her last name?
Her husband, Bob and Lori live right across the street.
What's her last name?
I can't rattle it out.
Did we go with that H?
Can't tie off the bat.
So there's a lot of blanks.
Um, for 45 Oak.
She's always been in the meeting, so her name can be figured out.
Yes.
All right, so maybe if you can email Jake, he makes his first round, and then email it to the rest of us so that we can be ready for the July meeting. Because that's what I did with the first set, I got all the word and then I fixed them and then I sent them back, but I don't think we've been doing that, so, no, I didn't get any.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
No.
And Jake, and you can.
Plug away a little bit.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yeah?
On the setbacks on the street, I know it was a typo at 200, but what zone is that in?
So it was in VR.
What a?
Yeah, so.
VR?
Yeah, so we're talking, talk about the feature business items regarding the bylaws. So it was in VR, remember it was on casual court and Henry Lane was here and we were like, well, that's stupid that it's so far back in a VR zone.
What do you mean? Our town thing right now says 200 feet.
200 feet, but a VR.
Setback.
Setback for the house to be there.
That's why that circle, the 150-foot was, was all the way, yeah.
Upper corner.
Yeah, because you just have to prove that there's a circle, you don't say you're going to build there.
No, but it required that line to be set back 200 feet from the road, even though the frontage setback in a VR is 50 feet, even though that's on a retreat lot, right, in the VR zone.
But that is the whole point of the 150 diameter is you, that's where you're supposed to build your house. But ours reads, I believe that we just.
Demonstrated.
Yeah. But other towns, yeah, they make you build in that circle. Where are you, where are you saying this?
Judgment here, second page, 4.3.7.
Yeah, that's why I missed.
Yeah.
I don't have one. All right, okay, so.
So I set this out, we talked about it in our previous meeting about the getting these on our, so we can get them to fall town meeting, just, you know, where we want to move forward into fall town meeting, so we have to kind of give a, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down on each one of these. I did remove the accessory apartment after the feedback, I haven't heard back from Ken about some of the changes on around that, you were talking about going from three years to four years or changes in stuff around the accessory apartments, you were concerned with which was.
I think three years is fine.
Yeah, that's what it is now.
That's what we said, yeah.
I didn't hear anything from Ken, you know what I mean, so, but I took it out, I took it out of the ones, but all the other ones in here were the ones we discussed and the problems that we discovered with the last few applicants. And then the other one that has been here is the monument for the fall town meeting.
Oh, good.
So, so if you want, I'll reach through, you know, first one's section 1.3, that's just adding in the language removed with Massachusetts law, chapter 40A, section 5, with adopting zoning. Next article is 3.3, this one here is the one with the accessory apartment, so we're going to take that one out, okay? So the next one is 4.3, which is the lot frontage exemption. This is the one we ran into the problem with Henry Lane in casual court with the lot on a VR being 200 feet back, and then they had, we approved them that night, and then they would have really had a special permit because they're so far back in a VR zone, it's not applicable, you know, whatsoever applicable. So the other thing was, is that I removed was the language on common owner as of.
Mike, bunch of guys.
That from Jay's feedback, you know, we're dating it based upon what is adopted, but not with the owner today. The last one was the highway bounds, requesting $12,500 for the survey. So altogether, there's just three articles.
I'm sorry, can we please make sure that we get all the copies?
Yep, he's going to go there, 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 unless he starts signing.
Second one, I thought I removed it, you know, apologize to the board, the second one can be removed, that's the accessory apartment thing that we.
Apology accepted.
Yeah, because, because we had lengthy discussion that night about it.
Correct, I thought I removed it.
That's okay.
Is you guys comfortable with the three there as written and drafted?
The highway bounds is, that's the one I've always been.
Is that the same amount from previous?
Yeah, yeah, we've been, we've been not going above the $15,000 mark. I believe, one state $900 a bound roughly to a thousand a bound.
What?
But it may have changed, this economic environment that we're in.
And I know.
The timeline's definitely changed.
I'll throw it out there, and I know you're leaving unfortunately, whether it can get passed on or not, I'd like to know, with all the approvals we've had for those, where they're at, how many have been done and how many haven't been done? Because we've had.
Probably have a chart.
Andrews, I think, was awarded.
Correct, but I know there was an award made for, for these to be done, and Bill had it all laid out on where it was all going to go. Obviously, since he's been gone and it's been chaotic, I haven't heard if any of it's been done, and if so, have they all been done, partially done, or where we are at?
Downs Road was one of them, right?
Correct. I know that we're starting in one area.
I've seen them out there, I've done some of them, I don't know.
Right, I'm just looking to see where we're at in the process of it being completed.
There's two pieces here, one is Andrews was awarded.
There may be a few more.
Yeah, there is.
Where he is, in our, if you go into our old tiny URL, in one of those things, Bill had a sheet just to work off, they have all the subdivisions that were lacking bounds, so he could say this subdivision is missing 10 bounds, you know, six bounds, so he had it all spelled out. I want to say there was five or six subdivisions.
I know there's a bunch that got to be done, we were just starting on it each year.
Correct.
And then that's all that, I'm looking towards a report on where we're at. So moving forward, we'll know, okay, we got this much done and we have this much further to go.
As a goal.
Ian, do you want to get the margin on getting these articles ready for our July meeting? So we can do a follow-up.
Yes, we do.
Do we need to have, does county council look at this before we move forward to selectmen or not?
We have to.
We have to draft them articles, these are just generic, pretty much generic.
You got one more, Mike, that's it.
Ian, you want me to send this doc to you?
You can send that to me.
For work off that?
Yep. Do we have a contact for Andrews Engineering so I can get an update on that?
Apparently not.
You do?
Byron is the one I have.
I have Byron in my phone too.
He's the one that was awarded it.
Okay.
It was his firm.
Okay.
So I'll send you that.
I'll give it to you right now, you want his phone number?
Okay, so by consensus, we'll go with all the listed proposed warrant protocols except for number two on this list. By consensus, any objections? Okay, all right.
No objection.
Thank you. All right, you do have an email that came in from Ken Fraser, if you could take a look at that and respond back to him if he has comments, concerns.
The piece is ready, then I'll take it.
So if you can write that back.
Is this the last one? I just signed these.
I'm sure he's looking for some kind of feedback from the board on that.
Did anybody, I think it's in our packet.
Yeah.
I'll reply back to Ken.
Oh, yeah, on the building department there?
Correct, yeah, I'll take care of that.
Well.
What's the feedback of the board, I guess, or thoughts?
And I'll just recuse myself, but I'll stay here. Okay, thank you.
I mean, if he's happy, so for the payment we've talked about, it seems like he's satisfied with the guardrail situation.
Yep.
And the permanent signs in the front of the building have been ordered, and I understand that they're waiting for a vendor. If he's happy with everything else, then I would think that should be it.
Yeah, they're hydro seating too, which is in the.
They've got to schedule that.
Yeah, I mean, he's.
They're doing what they got to do.
All right. Are we almost afraid of? Yeah, there's been quite a bit of work done, over by again today, the fences up.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Committed to it, we said.
All right. What's happening with the progress?
Yes.
And we're.
Right now, it seems like so far, no concerns, I mean, nothing's been brought up, he hasn't brought anything up, except for what we already know about.
Except they didn't know the name of the place.
And you've been over there checking it out. Okay.
It's called the Flying Goose. Appreciate it. I read it and it was like T and Z, wasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, see what they all say, I mean.
Ian, anything else?
No.
Board?
Well, sir, hope to see you back here.
Hope to be back, under, you know, maybe different circumstances.
Well, if you really hope to be back.
And if you know of any real good.
No.
If you know of any real good grants, let us know. Keep us on the inside.
We, yeah, we'll keep you guys on the loop on any new grant opportunities and other sort of fun things that come.
He must get free lunches or something. Why do you wanna be there so much?
Don't we get used to 10 hours a month anyways? What?
We can get paid here.
10 hours a month anyways? 10 hours a month. Yeah, as our town.
CMRPC hours.
12 hours. But you have to, you have to come, you have to show up to events to get more hours.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
I never knew that.
Yeah, you show up to like quarterly meetings or.
I never, I never heard that we got any hours when I used to go.